All right, thank you very much. Today is Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. The time is 6:01 PM. At this time, we are ready to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Adam?
President.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Here.
Councilmember Buchalato? Is not... Excellent, welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Neal?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mendoza?
Here.
And Mayor Walter is here. Can we please rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
.....................................................................
At this time, we'll go ahead and open the first call to the public of the evening. Call to the public is for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. And the council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be placed upon a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noted for discussion and legal action. I do have Ms. Sherri Butler, who has put in a request to speak. If you would come up to the podium, please.
Mrs.
Mrs. My apologies, Ronald.
Thank you, Mayor Walter. Thank you, members of town council. I appreciate the opportunity... Oh, sorry. My voice isn't that big, is it? Thank you, Mayor Walter, members of town council, and to the public. I appreciate the opportunity to be here on behalf of the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce. So, I speak for myself and the members of the steering committee regarding Florence Women in Business. And this... This is an event. It is a quarterly series of events, roughly. It's over at the Green Tree Inn and Suites. And our next one is Wednesday, September 11th, from 6:00 to 7:30. It's only $10 for a chamber member, $15 for non, and $20 at the door. So, that fee includes dinner. The topic that we're going to discuss is quite special because we will be honoring women in law enforcement, women in the fire department, and women in the military. So, we'll have two representatives from the military and two from... From... I can't think of the right term. First responders, yes. So, I just wanted to let everybody know. And the registrations are available through Eventbrite. It's the September 2024 event. So, I just thank you. There are many people that come together to make this event happen, and I'm very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I'm glad that you came and also extended to everybody that invitation.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in person or online that has not filled out a speaker form that would like an opportunity? All right, seeing none, we will have a second as we close the meeting for our guests to speak. Closing call to the public and moving on to our public hearing and presentations. The first item is a public hearing to receive comments regarding the Penal Food Market, located at 90 North Main Street, Florence, Arizona, received from Mr. Curry for an owner transfer of the Series 9 liquor license and for council recommendation to approve or disapprove the said license. Mrs. Lisa Garcia.
Yes, the application was applied for on July 12th, 2024. The town's clerk office did receive the application on August 14th, 2024, where we posted the application. It's remained posted for 20 days, and we have not received any comments negatively or positively regarding the application. And staff's recommendation is to proceed and put in a recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody in person or online that would like to speak at this time regarding this agenda item? Seeing none from council or public, in person or online, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing comment time. Item B is a presentation by the United States Department of...
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I please have a motion?
Oh, my apologies, the way it was written, it does not say approval/disapproval on the agenda packet.
It says recommendation for approval or disapproval of said license.
Don't be... You're right.
It's in the text.
And I read it as well, so at that time, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer of the license for Penal Food Market as written.
Second.
Motion by Kathy Adam, multiple by Vice Mayor Mendoza and Councilmember Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have a presentation by the United States Department of Agriculture, State Director Charlene Fernandez regarding the USDA programs and more. Good evening, ma'am. How are you?
Good evening. Thank you for having me, Honorable Mayor and honorable members of the council here in Florence, Arizona. So happy to be here. I am from Arizona, born and raised in Yuma County, rural Arizona. So, I know what it's like to live in a rural community. And it makes it more, even more fun to come and see all the rural communities throughout Arizona. And as I travel, and this... Let me give you a little bit of background about myself. This job that I have is an appointment by President Biden. I've been serving in this capacity for three years. And the opportunity that I've had to travel throughout Arizona and see the people that look and act and have the needs just like the next community that I was in, will be going to and the one that I was in before. We all want to participate. We all want to be bigger than something other than ourselves. We all want and need the resources to raise healthy families, no matter what that looks like, quality jobs, good schools, good food, whatever that looks like. So, this administration has appropriated dollars for us to go out and help our communities, tools, tools in our toolbox. Many of those tools come in the form of housing. For the United States Department of Agriculture, people, when I say that I work there, they find it very strange that I would talk about housing. We actually are one of the largest home loan facilities in the banking facility in this country. Our home interest rates, when you qualify, are less than anywhere else in the country. So, it's pretty robust. We are constantly doing home loans in rural Arizona. I hear from, when I go back to many of the communities, I hear from mayors and council members and county board of supervisors that tell me that they grew up in a USDA home. So, that's something that I'm really proud of, that we continue that tradition of making sure people have safe and sanitary homes to live in. Part of that housing program is we do self-help housing. And this means that people can actually build their own home. And by doing so, they're saving so much money on the end result of a home loan. So, when we do self-help housing, we have families that work Monday through Friday, and then on Friday evenings, they show up in a group to build their home. And they work Friday evening, Saturday, and Sunday. So, they're not going to get in that house in 90 days or 120 days. Sometimes it takes six or seven months. But when they walk through those doors of that self-help home, they will have already incurred about $60,000, $70,000, $80,000 in equity in that home. So, we're really producing homes for everyone, for all income levels in all areas of Arizona. We also for home loan, in the home housing area, we do repairs. So, for those families that qualify and anyone over the age of 60 that qualifies, we come in and give a $10,000 grant or a $40,000 loan to repair a home. What does that look like? Is it a ramp for someone that is, has special needs? Is it a bathroom that needs to be retrofitted? Is it a kitchen that needs to be retrofitted? But those are grants and loans that USDA provides for our communities to make sure that our elderly people, our families in need, are living in a safe and sanitary home that's accessible to all members of that family. I like to tell one story. I like to tell a lot of stories, but I like to tell this one story of a home that's being built right this minute in San Luis, Arizona. And in this family is one adult member, I was going to say adult child, one member of the family that's an adult, and he does have special needs. That home that that family is building is going to be retrofitted for that young man. He will be able to live comfortably in that home with his family, have all the needs of a bathroom that is built to suit him, a bedroom that is suited so that he can have physical therapists come in, and he can do his physical therapy right there in the privacy of his own home. So, when you think of USDA, don't just think about meat, don't just think about agriculture, but think about the quality of life. As my friend back here, Rule Jared Raymond, who's our Rule Partners Network community liaison, he stole this line from somebody, so I'm going to steal it from him. We're more than plows, cows, and sows. So, we are helping communities. We do take into consideration, one of our pillars is climate change. And we know that in many areas of rural Arizona, we are experiencing climate change. So, we have a lot of funding that is available in grants and in loans to come in and retrofit, whether it be your town council building or your library, whatever it takes, we can bring someone in that will do an assessment in that building to see how we can retrofit it so that it will be an energy saver at the end of the year, so you can realize some savings. That's one of the pillars of USDA to make sure that we address those needs. We also have a Department of Community Facilities where we do build those kind of buildings. We have libraries that we've built, we've built fire stations, we've built police stations, we've built community centers, senior centers, and those are through loans and grants. We also have funding for water systems, whether it be wastewater treatment plant or a water treatment plant, whatever that looks like, we're there to help you. And then, a lot of people don't know that we also do broadband. So, in areas that are having issues with Wi-Fi, we've had, we have, I think we're in reconnect number eight, and that means for the last eight sessions, we have been connecting communities throughout Arizona. So, the commitment of this administration is that we connect Arizona, where no matter where you're at, if you're on the Navajo Nation, if you're in Mojave County, if you're in eastern Arizona, if you're in southern Arizona, but you will be connected to high-quality, accessible, and affordable internet. So, we have so many programs, over 70 programs. I left a book on your desk up there with information about our programs. I also left this wonderful little book that we just received in the mail from our national office. I just want to read a little bit of what it says. Rural America is hometown America. For many of us, the notion of hometown brings with it a sense of belonging. It's a place where people know and greet each other, celebrate in times of joy, and helps in times of need. It's this connection to community that makes rural America, and I like to replace Arizona with that, such a great place to live. So, we want to make sure that Florence becomes more of a great place to live. Just by coming and visiting today and being here in the past, I know this is a wonderful place, such a beautiful little community, but we want to be there for any of your needs. Nothing's off the table, and it may not be us that fund something that you need. It may not be us that can provide the answer or the resource, but we are willing to connect the dots, and we've done that in community after community after community. We work closely with the Community Foundation of Arizona for gap funding. They're always there to help us, to help you. We work closely with nonprofits throughout Arizona to come into communities just like this. So, don't ever fail to make us your first call. I like to say it will probably be your last call. So, thank you so much, and we'll be here if you have any questions.
So, this is fantastic information as I'm looking over everything that you have provided. And I want to say thank you to Councilmember Adam for arranging you to come and present to us this evening. It is highly valuable, not only for our council, but as well as for our public and our staff to be aware of the opportunities that are available in our community.
Absolutely. And I don't want you to, Mayor, never feel inhibited about contacting us and saying, "Hey, bring your staff out here. We're a hop, skip, and a jump away." And even if we weren't, we'd come out here. We can, you know, during one of your work sessions, we would be happy to come out and do a more in-depth presentation.
Thank you so much. Ms. Adams, Councilmember Adam, would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to speak to the nonprofits and the small business owners out there. So, as most of you know, I'm with the Penal County Historical Museum. And I had come across the USDA rural at a conference many years ago, and I took the card and I put it aside. And sure enough, when our roof started leaking at the museum, you might not think of going to USDA, but we did. And they matched our funding. And I will tell you, that was, it's the difference between having garbage cans out in the middle of the museum floor and being able to do it because, as you know, roofs are very expensive. I know there are several other nonprofits in town that are trying to raise funds to rehab their buildings. We also, I was just explaining, my last month's utility bill was $2,000, which is killer for us, right? So, Charlene and her team are going to come out and do an assessment. So, again, for the small businesses out there, don't just be thinking this is wastewater and major projects. They can help everybody, and the housing is critical, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And you know what? I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that our housing program here in Arizona is number three in the nation. Number three. So, thank you.
That's excellent. Thank you. Next, we have two proclamations that we are going to give down on the floor. If counsel you'd like to join. All right. We are going to start with our library presentation. We're making our game plan. All right. So, we have National Library Card Sign-up Month. And our library to begin is absolutely amazing. We continuously receive comments on how fantastic our library is and all of the different offerings that have been brought forward. We even have a brand-new item that has been added to our maker space in the library. It is an edible printer. And I believe on September 16th, they're offering, 18th, they're offering another certification class for anybody in our community that wants to learn how to use the 3D printer, the Glowforge, which is like a laser engraver, etcher, you name it. This machine is absolutely delightful, a wood burner. It does it all. Embroidery machines, sewing machines, crickets, you name it. There is an opportunity for anybody who wants to learn how to use these devices and even venture out into a small business eventually in their own area. So, I encourage you, visit the library. They have an array of books and materials gathering spaces. So, I just wanted to say thank you for that. So, let's talk about the library card, and then I'm going to turn it over to you ladies and gentlemen, okay? The National Library Card Sign-up Month is September 2024. Whereas it was established in 1987, the Library Card Sign-up Month has been held each September every year beginning of the school year. Now, the American Library Association, known as the ALA, and the librarians nationwide remind parents, caregivers, and students that signing up for a library card is the first sign-up to the path of academic achievement and lifelong learning. A library card gives students the tools that they need to succeed in the classroom and provides people of all ages opportunities to pursue their dreams and their passions, whereas libraries provide access to reading materials, toys, movies, technology, media resources, and educational programs. Librarians create welcoming and inclusive spaces for people of all backgrounds and all ages to learn and engage with one another, whereas more than 5,500 Florence residents have a library card. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Tara Walter, Mayor of the Town of Florence, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as National Library Card Sign-up Month in Florence, Arizona, and encourage all of our citizens to support the Viney Jones Library right here in Florence, Arizona. And before I turn it over to these few, these two ladies and gentlemen, not only are the programs absolutely fantastic, but you could also access library materials remotely with your library card from the cloud. You can download it to your reading devices. And if you prefer a book and they don't have it, you can ask anybody, and they will get you the book because we have an inter-loan library system. So, any library in Penal County will send the book here, and they'll contact you, and you can have that book. One more thing, and then, yes, Vice Mayor? And on the card, when you check out, you will find out how much you have saved each year and each lifetime by using the library card. Because I found that out recently because we have what's also called a Culture Pass. And if you have not heard of the Culture Pass, really want to encourage everybody to go out and explore it. Basically, the Reed Park Zoo, many museums, lots of opportunities to go outdoors, get involved indoors with your family, and learn some things about Arizona. You'll receive two free passes with every library card that you have. And that's just another great opportunity that we offer here in Florence, Arizona, as well as other Penal County libraries, but this is about ours right now. Vice Mayor, before I turn it over?
I just want to say that this, well, a couple weeks ago, we had a first baby birthday party at my house. Every year, we spend a lot of money renting bounce houses. This year, we used our library card and checked out a phone machine, which was more exciting to the kids than the bounce house. So, they do have a phone machine that we can use. Like I said, the kids loved it. You guys need to try it. It was fun. I even played in it.
That's happening.
So, I just wanted to talk just a little bit about the importance of library cards. So, my mom grew up in an abusive home, and her escape was the public library. And I grew up seeing my mom read all of the time. That was my earliest memories, was watching my mom read, which was very important to me because then I became a reader, and then I raised three readers in our home as well. I was looking through my mom's journals the other day and was opening up. She passed away about six years ago. And I found a library card that she had in her journal from the town of Globe, Miami, where she was living at the time. And that meant, you can't believe how much that meant to me to find this old library card that she had hung on for all of those years. So, that being said, you all are familiar with Harry Potter. There's a phrase that's used in Harry Potter about he who should not be named. When I was looking up to see who all had library cards, those who should not be named do not have library cards, but now they do. And we have some special gold star library cards for everybody on the council. So, they are for you to use in common, just to recognize that this is National Library Card Sign-up Month. So, use them wisely, use them often because they're the most important card in your wallet. And so, those are for you as a gift from the library, just to remind you the importance of library cards.
Does this replace my current library card?
Yes, it does. Yes, it is.
Is it the same number?
It's a different number, but your account's linked to that. I made sure that happened.
Thank you. I'm going to give you this one. This is a proclamation.
Yes.
It has a nice weight to it, too.
I've had a library card for a long time.
Let the record reflect, Councilmember Neal is an avid library user as well. Oh, you made these on the Glowforge? Yes, I know. Is this different? Oh, that's amazing. Can we take a nice picture with? And everybody show your cards. All right. Mr. Paul King.
Our ladies and gentlemen.
Yes. So, September is National Senior Center Month, and in honor of that, we have our staff. And I'd like to say a few words about what we're doing to celebrate National Senior Center Month. So, we've got some special friends here that all want to say a few words here as well. So, the events that we have scheduled, the large one that we have every day, every year that we love is Grandparents' Day. And so, that will be on September 5th coming up, and from 5:00 to 7:00 at the senior center here in Florence. All members of the public are invited. We really love to pack the house on this one, so it's a lot of fun. I think the most important thing to take away from this is it's an intergenerational event. We invite the teens to come and help, youth, young, old, we all have a great time there. It's really a fun thing, and it shows the spirit. Uh, and it, and it shows the spirit of multi-generational programming, um, that we do, uh, in our department. The, uh, the other event is Patriots Day and that's, that's going to be coming up here. Um, obviously it'll be on September eleventh to celebrate and remember, uh, September eleventh, two thousand and one. And, uh, this will be a great event. We, uh, actually cook a meal and give a special gift to all the first responders. And that's not just Florence, uh, the Town of Florence Police Department and Fire Department, but it's for the counties, the sheriff, uh, other organizations in our community that are and represent for special, uh, first responders. So we greatly appreciate that and we want to celebrate them on that particular day. September twenty fifth, we have our Home Improvement fundraiser. And this is a big one and this involves biscuits and gravy, which is a famous signature meal at the Senior Center on Wednesdays. So, uh, come on out for that. It's a three dollar donation, goes to a great cause. We have, uh, that'll be from seven AM to nine AM, uh, on September twenty fifth. Uh, biscuits and gravy for three dollars. From ten thirty to twelve thirty, we're going to do the, uh, walking taco lunch, another favorite. And, um, we're going to continue the celebration and, um, throughout that day. And just enjoy, uh, the, the, the county employees and town employees really su- come out to, to support that. So goes to a great cause, helping folks who really can't afford home improvement projects to get some things done around their house. So with that, uh, I'm going to introduce some special people. Um, and, uh, we want to just celebrate them as well. So thank you folks for coming. Um, we have a couple of great stories. I'm going to start with Leo over here. Uh, so thank you, Leo, go ahead.
Thank you. Same now, I'm glad this didn't have a height chart on it. I was getting a little nervous. Anyway, back to the Senior Center. I'd like to tell my story about how these saved my life. Three years ago, I, well, I was in Caliente and I, no fault of my own, I ended up alone and couldn't drive and no way to get around. And my kids called one day and said, Dad, we gotta have a talk. So I knew I was in trouble. And you get to be eighty, things are a little different. But anyway, first thing I done, I cleaned the house. I mean, I found that baby up. And then I cut to thinking, well, I don't know what else I can do. Can't go to town, can't do anything. So the kids come out and my daughter was down getting her hair fixed at the beauty shop and they said, Suzanne said, well, take your dad down to the Senior Center and see what happens. So that's what they done. They took me down to the Senior Center and of course, the rest of the story is she saved my life. And from then, then on, they take you shopping, take you to the doctors. Do, I'll pick you up every morning, feed you, have good camaraderie all day long, take you home and everything is good. And that's when I was eighty. Went through the pandemic and they brought food and all that good stuff. And I little progressed in life a little bit. And thanks to the Senior Center, I'm eighty-nine and doing fine.
Hi, I'm Debbie Stevens and, uh, I've been coming down to the Senior Center probably about six years now. I really, really enjoyed it when I first, actually, my first time was, uh, Ju- a Fourth of July picnic. But after I seen what kind of went on and that, I immediately asked Tanya, do you need any volunteers still? Well, she said, well, we could use some help at the desk. Well, I worked at Sun City at the desk for six years. I said, enough of the desk. I said, do you have anything else? She said, what about the kitchen? Perfect. I don't mind doing dishes. I don't mind helping in the kitchen. I've been doing it ever since, really, really enjoy the time down there. Um, I have to beat Leo, hmm, on a daily basis on the Wii bowling game.
That's not fair.
Yeah, but other than that, no, it's been a, it's been a real great experience for me and I hope I'm able to do it for a lot of years down the road. Thank you.
My name is Bonnie Dunn and a couple of years ago, my story's a little bit like Leo's. Couple of years ago, I was able to retire and I swore I was not going to work again ever in my life. After about a year, I started isolating myself. When you don't have family in the vicinity, you start isolating. And I started going down a hole and it wasn't good. Then one of my friends told me, go to the Senior Center, they got food. I don't cook and I said, okay, I'll go have lunch. I started going there and having lunch. Then I started making friends. And then I volunteered. Couple of months later, Tanya says, Bonnie, do you, do you want a job? I jumped at it. I drive the bus, I pick up Leo and I pick up everybody else and we have lunch, we play games and we do a lot of activities in the evening. And it, uh, gave me, gave me a family that I don't have here. And so, I don't know, it's pretty darn good.
Good life.
Good life. Thank you.
Um, I had Paul do the talking because I'm a little under the weather tonight. But I just want to say that we're so lucky to be supported by the town and by what we do, we couldn't do without our volunteers. We have an awesome staff, but we couldn't do it without the volunteers of the community and your support and we just really appreciate it. Thank you.
So September twenty twenty four is National Senior Center Month. And we have so much going on at our Senior Center. So seniors out there, if you have not engaged, I encourage you to come take a look at everything that is going on. Whereas older Americans are significant members of our society, investing in their wisdom and experience to help enrich and strengthen our community. The Dorothy Nolan Senior Center has acted as a catalyst for revitalizing the creativity, the energy, vitality and commitment of the older residents of the Town of Florence. And whereas the whole array of services, programs and activities, Senior Centers empower older citizens of Florence, Arizona to contribute to their own health and well-being and the health and well-being of their fellow citizens of all ages. And whereas during the pandemic, the Dorothy Nolan Senior Center has been a community partner in ensuring that our most vulnerable citizens, people aged sixty-five and older, many with underlying medical conditions are cared for and able to stay connected, safe and healthy. And the Dorothy Nolan Senior Center in Florence, Arizona affirm the dignity, self-worth and independence of older persons by facilitating their decisions and actions, tapping their experiences, skills and knowledge and enabling their continued contributions to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that I Tara Walter do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty four as National Senior Center Month and call upon all citizens to recognize the special contributions of the Senior Center participants and the special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of the older citizens of our community. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, item E is our Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds Waterwell Project update on the rodeo grounds well tank, construction and operation process, Mr. Paul King.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm happy to report tonight to you, just a, a quick overview that the well project, the well tank project and, um, several other projects are, are continuing to occur at the rodeo grounds to, for, to making ongoing improvements. Um, these particular projects related to the water out there are complete. The water is pumping and running and, um, we were able to, um, have our first event, uh, where we're, uh, the concessionaire was able to utilize the pump and truck all the water to do the dust mitigation activities prior to the event without the support of the Streets Department, uh, time and vehicles. So we're happy to report that tonight to you. These, uh, special events, um, are growing. Uh, we know it's because of the popularity of the rodeo grounds. We know that it's also in, uh, proportionate to the reasons, uh, sorry, the, um, the projects that we're completing and we have planned that, um, are out on the, on the internet. And, um, the, the event producers are really coming through and, and starting to schedule that property for, uh, multiple events. We have about forty scheduled to date, uh, September through May. So, um, quite a packed, uh, season we have, uh, from the concessionaire. So I just wanted to kind of give that report to you and, um, we'll welcome any questions or comments.
Are there any? Councilmember Adam.
Thank you very much for, for that report and having it on the agenda tonight. The rodeo grounds is one of the premier attractions we have in Florence, right? The, our Junior Prado Rodeo is the oldest junior rodeo in the country. And, um, I'm very interested in seeing this brought up to spec so that it is comfortable and safe for the audience and the animals. And so these projects, great, and I'm glad to see them, they're on track for September. There are other projects involving shade and parking. And, uh, the reason why I bring this up is because this rodeo ground can be a revenue generator for us, right? Not a drain. Right now, we're investing a lot of money in the infrastructure, but I need to see it get to the point where it is that much of an attraction so that we are generating revenue for the town. And so I'm trying to put a sense of urgency to this. And also for those of us who attend and love this rodeo, it is really hot out there without any shade, so anything you can do, appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I'd like to say thanks for the report. It was very thorough. One of the things is Country Thunder, that's what we're known for. It was one of the things that, at the League of Cities, that everybody knew where we were at because of that. So I was wondering to see if they're going to have any kind of promotional stuff promoting these forty events at Country Thunder, so the folks that are there know, hey, look, by the way, we also got this going on at the, at our rodeo grounds.
I can check with the event, um, concession, the concessionaire for the property and make sure that he's speaking with the promoters on the promotions and we can, um, certainly maybe invite that or help, help with that connection.
Thank you, Paul.
I just wanted to say, I, no, I don't like to repeat people, but almost in line with what Kathy said. I, I just remember growing up here and trust me, I'm a soul brother through and through. I don't know nothing about horses and cows and cowboys, that ain't my thing. But what it used to generate in Florence and how much it would bring to the town and now being the liaison that sits on the rodeo ground board, I've honestly just, I've told Councilman Ford that we need to get a hundred percent behind this. This is something that's proud Florence history, even knowing I don't know nothing about rodeos and cowboys, it's almost going to be a hundred years. It's the oldest junior rodeo in, in the country. I'd like to thank the posse members for what they've done and now it's going in a new direction with the grandson of Mr. Whitlow and it's, and it's something that Florence needs to get behind. We need to definitely put a lot more money and time into the rodeo grounds because they have an opportunity to do some things that are, man, they're going to be crazy for Florence people to even think about. I'm talking about televised rodeo events, things that are coming down the line and if we continue to push it and advertise it, it is going to be very possible. So I just want everybody in Florence to definitely get behind this rodeo grounds because really, honestly, the sky's the limit, what they're doing out there really is.
They've been doing fantastic work down at the rodeo grounds. I do appreciate the update. I know when we had the most recent board meeting, we had talked about the sound system. Is there anything further that's going to be coming up about that?
So the sound system was one of the projects from fiscal year twenty-four. Um, that, that carried over a bit, uh, into twenty-five with, uh, some delayed in the lead time for the contractor. That's, that sound system is up and running and, and fully functional now.
Perfect. I just wanted to, I looped back because I remembered we spoke about that. And it's working well?
Yes, yes, it's, uh, they worked, they worked it this weekend. Um, there's a little bit of a learning curve with everybody that is operating it, but it is, it does have some bells and whistles, which is great for us, just a little bit of a learning curve, but it is operational and working now.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I can't wait to hear it. Councilmember Buchalato.
I just wanted to agree with, um, Mr. Neil and, and Ms. Adam about the rodeo ground and for everybody that, that can throw their support behind them. And I just wanted to remind everybody that on, um, September twenty-first, they're having a big fundraiser at the Coolidge Florence Elks Lodge. And I think the doors open at four PM, um, tons of raffle prizes, um, and just a great time, great dinner, um, and a big way for our residents and ourselves to be able to show some support to them. Thank you.
Thank you. No further comments, so thank you so much, Mr. King.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, we have our consent agenda and all items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is to approve the acceptance of an award and authorization for the interim town manager to enter into a grant agreement with the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the Florence Public Safety Dispatch Center project in the amount of one million two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Item B, acceptance of the resignation of Carolyn Davis from the Community Services Advisory Board with sincere appreciation to her dedicated service. Item C is to accept the warrant register for the month of July twenty twenty-four in the amount of eight million. in the amount of eight million eight hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. Item D is approval of the August fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four council minutes. Item E is to receive and file the following boards and commission minutes, the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds Committee minutes of July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, the Community Services Advisory Minutes of June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four, Florence Memorial Park Ad Hoc Committee Minutes of April seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four, Historic District Advisory Commission Minutes of July seventeenth and thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, the Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes of June twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, and the Florence Teen Minutes of July eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. Ladies and gentlemen, that is our consent agenda, is there anybody that would like any item removed at this time? Vice Mayor?
I want to remove Item A.
Item B?
A.
A, Item A. All right, with that, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of Item A.
I'd like to approve the consent agenda with removal of Item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all opposed? Motion carries, and Vice Mayor Mendoza?
I just wanted to bring this item to the public and let them know that this amount of money and the work that went behind this is amazing. I don't have anything bad to say about it. I did want people to know that we're getting mobile data computers, getting mobile and portable radios, body worn cameras, dispatch console furniture, public safety workforce management software. They're doing a lot of work over at the Police Department, and I just wanted to commend the Police Department for that. That's all I have.
I'm really, just wanted to add real quick, I also was thinking about pulling this one because I wanted to say thank you so much for your hard work and everything that you're doing over the Police Department to make sure that we're staying ahead of the curve between filling staff and encouraging all of this growth and development over there. I'm just really pleased with everything that's happened, so I just wanted to say thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, first, let me go ahead and thank you for your continued support of not only the town of Florence, but our Police Department. I also like to go ahead and thank Jennifer Evans, she did a lot of work in making sure that we got the grant. So, again, thank you all very much.
And she is online, so that was well received. Would you like to make a motion, Vice Mayor?
I make a motion that we approve Item seven A.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And all opposed? And motion carries unanimously. Item eight A is our unfinished business, and this is discussion approval disapproval of setting a policy for recognizing annual service of the Florence Teen Council, Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, Members of Council, we were here last meeting talking about how to reward our teens for their service. Council asked for different options, we went back to the table, we provided you three different options, we provided the minimum, maximum amount of what the year could look like, because some people may be in their first year, some may be in their final year or their fourth year. And we also offered options such as having the terms be changed to be April so that they could be awarded in May along with their school's graduation. Right now, the term of the teen council runs till October, and the bylaws state that the teens will continue service until that time. So, in, while they're in their break from school before they go to college, they remain on the board. So, it would be either that we would, council would present the teens with their awards as they're stepping off of the board, they would award it each year if they like, or we could move that term and have it awarded with the school. So, let's go back and talk about the modified proposals. The first modified proposal is that they would receive two hundred and fifty dollars for each qualified year. The total for all seven would be a one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The second proposal would be that each teen member would be awarded two hundred and fifty dollars for the first year of service, and a gradual increase for each years after served. This would raise a potential payout for four years to a thousand one hundred and fifty, that being that the first year would be two fifty, the second year would be two seventy-five, the third year would be three hundred, and the fourth year would be three twenty-five. Costs per seven members would be equivalent to one thousand seven hundred and fifty-two, a maximum of two thousand four hundred and fifty. The last proposal that we put together for you would be that each member would earn two hundred and fifty, and on each second term, they would receive a bonus, one hundred dollars. So, with that, the first year would be two fifty, second year would be two fifty, but they would have the bonus because it's the second year bonus. Third year would go into two fifty again, fourth year would be two fifty with a bonus, and the maximum, minimum cost would be one thousand seven hundred and fifty with the maximum cost of four thousand four hundred and fifty. And if you don't like those, we, council could create one on their own, or you could once again defer it back to staff to reconsider the options. The staff is still proposing, number one, two hundred and fifty dollars per service for each year. We want to thank them in their first, their second, their third and fourth year, but we also want to make sure that they're there for the right reason. And we don't mind our council doing the award and keeping the seniors on throughout that summer, but if council would like us to go with the May, we will definitely bring back a resolution changing the terms.
Council, would you like to add anything, or state your position?
I, I really like modified proposal two, I like the steps in it. Also, I would like for it to be changed to May, so we can do it at graduation as well. So, that's the one I propose.
Maybe not graduation, but their award ceremony?
Correct.
Yes.
Which there, we did April so that we could have it inputted into their award ceremony in May?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And would we be going ratifying back to the first year? Or from this point forward?
Yes, I would ratify back.
Okay.
I liked modified proposal number two as well, because I feel like that encourages them, although technically they're potentially could get more with the proposal three, I like the idea that they're seeing the sequence of steps per year. So, I do like that one. I also believe that they should get it at the end of the school year. However, I have a little bit of a concern about if we change the terms to being in April where the term ends, you're gonna be looking to fill those seats during that time, and I'm just concerned about how that's gonna play out, since it's not gonna be in the school year, to get the youth involved, to actually get them to enroll to, for the next council, for the next people. So, I'm just concerned, I believe that we should award it then, but I'm concerned about moving that as the date in which the new people would be seated. So, I'll let everybody else.
I, I will share with you, staff has similar concerns. The reason why we did select the date was so that we could, of October, was so that we could work with the counselors on their first year and be able to have the counselors suggest people to be part of the program. You do have to maintain a C average, you do have to be making sure that you're doing your deliverables in school and, and all of that, but we are happy to be able to move that, we'll have to find a different way. And the other thing that we need to know is, are we gonna hold that check till their senior year, or are we going to be awarding each year?
My opinion is to pay it out at the end of their senior year, that's personally, because if you're paying it out every single year, then they could be like, well, I already got my check, I'm not coming back next year, I'm good with that. So, I think it encourages them to come back year over year. Again, I share the same concerns. If I was an eighth grader, thinking in that mindset, going into freshman year, I might have had all above C average in middle school, but could be a transfer student or anything like that, there's not enough experience there in their existing school here to be able to say that, yes, they're gonna have that same pattern, I guess. So, I think that leaving it at the, what, May, October, November timeframe, I think that that's best.
October, I agree. But the only thing is, is the payout then would have to be in October.
Does it have to be though, or can we still during their senior year, pay them out in April?
So, they'd be six months into their senior year, we'd have to be worded to say that a partial term, so if somebody serves six months and stepped down, would they receive it? Or is it just because they're there in May that they're receiving it? So, it creates more of a cloud of why we're giving it, because it should be, term should be the length of their term before it's awarded.
Yeah, I, I see, I do see what you're saying. So, maybe we should disconnect it from the actual awards ceremony. And what we could do at that time is, should the mayor and council at that time choose, just like we've chosen every year to send off our seniors' letters of graduating and acknowledging them with the military and listy, we can have something of that nature.
And, and we could also do an award ceremony in September before they leave to go to college as well.
I mean, I'm also just concerned about doing it in October, because then you have the opposite problem, where you've got seniors who now have left and they're started college, who knows if they're gonna be literally across overseas, or whether they're going, so how are they going to, I mean, we're gonna have to track them down to get the money to them, essentially. And I just see that little bit.
They would still be on the board.
Technically, but they might be gone at their senior year, they're not gonna be, well, I guess maybe not, are you saying?
No, basically, they would have to step down if they were still on the board, and if they had to go. So, they would have to step down, but would we put a stipulation in place for someone that went on active duty?
We could absolutely put a stipulation in place for anybody who goes to active duty, that they receive full credit.
Because I'm thinking year one would start in November, right, and it would end in November, so they're gonna be a sophomore really when their first year ends. So, that's, you see what I'm saying?
One, one real example we have right now, because our chair is graduating this year.
Yes.
And she will be going away to college.
Mm-hmm. Leaving in August.
So, she'll be departing in August, but she'll still be recognized and still be awarded for her service. Her spot would not be replaced until...
All right, stipulations for both college and for military.
Yeah, because I think that some of these kids, I mean, realistically, to be honest and be, and be frank, I had to drop out of college because I was a hundred dollars short on my tuition. I don't know if anybody knows that, but that's why, because I did not grow up in a high income family, and I did not have the means to be able to get a job at that point, because I didn't have a vehicle, or getting into personal stuff. Anyway, my story is, is that this could be the difference between a child going to college or not going to college, something as simple as a couple hundred dollars. So, this is why I want to make sure that when they step in that door on the first day of college, that they have that money, because it might be the difference between them staying in college or not. So, I feel that there's very much an importance of when it's actually awarded, but I guess I'll leave those semantics to you.
If you like, we can take this back one more time, we can put it together with all of the stipulations, we can get it perfect, and I can bring back also any resolution that's required changing as well. But right now, what I hear you saying is that you like option number two, that you would like it to remain in the current date cycle that it's in, and we are making stipulations as their term is served, if they're attending college or attending military, and we will invite them to a future council meeting to receive those awards and invite their family as well.
Yes.
And I also see Councilmember Buchalato has her hand up.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt, but I don't think anybody had first saw my hand. I like option two, but I think that May would work better, because we just assume that every kid is here for the summer, some have split parenting plans, some are going to college, some are going to military, and I don't think that, that should have to do with, you know, them being a part of it or not. I think, I think it should follow the school year cycle. I think more kids may be involved in that, if that was the case. I do like all three options, but I think number two just works better for the youth in the community, because, you know, not, not every kid is here for the summer, some have split parenting plans, and I just think if we get too deep into it, it would just go left really fast. So, I'm just, I'm for option two, but with May.
Would you be acceptable to option two, keeping the terms they where they are, and calling all seniors' term as full term on graduation? And then giving them the option to continue service?
Yes.
Takes us a while, but I think we're there. I think next time we'll be ready.
Talking it through is always the best way to do it.
Okay, Mayor, no motion necessary, I will bring it back at the next meeting.
All right, thank you so much. We have our, did you have something else? It's okay.
I was just thinking through, because your freshman, I can take it offline, I'll take it offline, because I don't know, I'm just calculating, I'm sorry. I was just calculating through, your freshman year, your year one is really your sophomore year, because then you've completed one year, is that how you're counting it?
No.
Okay, we'll take it offline.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
But it doesn't mean that everyone's gonna start as a freshman, and it doesn't mean that everyone is going to end as a senior. It means that some kids may come in as freshmen, and they may love it so much that they may serve all four years, because by October, they start school in July. We go out, we give big presentations, July and August at the school, we take in our, our candidate applications, and then council will decide, both the teen council and this council will decide who our next members are, and there could be freshmen, juniors, sophomores, seniors, and they could be in any rate, so we count one term as the first term. They could be a junior, and they could do junior and senior, and only get two, two terms, even though they are graduating.
Okay, we'll take it offline, but I just want to make sure that we do have the potential for them to reach all four.
Yes, we do.
Item nine A is new business, discussion approval disapproval to enter into a cooperative use contract with the Arizona Recreation Design Incorporated, and this is to provide materials and installation of two playground systems for ages two to five and five to twelve at Heritage Park in the amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-six cents. Mr. Paul King?
Thank you, Mayor, Members of Council. This, just wanted to give you a few notes on this project. It is not your normal process for a normal project. We are taking the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's approved in this year's CIP plan for the playground improvements, and adding the fifty thousand dollar generous grant that was awarded to us by Florence Copper earlier this year, that takes us to the, close to the total of the estimate provided. The, the estimate is, what, what would follow the estimate will be a design. So, what we'll do is, we'll get with Florence Copper and, and our team and the vendor, and we'll develop some renditions and bring those back to you at a later date to make sure you understand the, the scope of the project. The, the intent of the entire project for both the two to five and the five to twelve playgrounds is to have inclusive attractions and amenities. And the challenge there is, we want to include everybody, but we want everybody to have challenges, and we want everybody to have fun and safe fun at that. So, we've, the, the company we're working with, Arizona, Arizona Recreation Design, is actually brought on a consultant who can, who helps with these things, and has a, has a very good background in adaptive recreation programming. So, it's, and, and playgrounds specifically. So, it'll be a great experience, I'm looking forward to when we bring this back to you.
Looking forward to that as well.
With, with that, I take any questions on the, the contract details or otherwise that you might have.
Vice Mayor?
I just have one question as far as the ADA portion of this enhancement. One of the things that we've been pushing is that ADA element. Also, we need to address the fencing issue for some of these children that are elopers, so... So yeah, it's good to have the equipment there, but we also have to keep them in the area. Parents that have children with autism will love to bring their kids as long as they know that they're safe inside an enclosure so that they don't have to chase them all the time. That's a very important thing that we need to add to that.
Any other questions or comments? All right, with that, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve to enter into a corporate use contract with Arizona Recreation Design.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Now we have our town managers report.
Mayor, can we do the appointment of the Community Service Advisory Board members?
Checked it off and then I put my glasses down, I put them back on and, thank you. Discussion approval disapproval of appointing the following applicants to the Community Services Advisory Board. We have Rebecca Smith with a term to expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Frida Lapos Babson with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And Julie Merriman as an alternate with a term to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. First and foremost, we want to thank everybody who stepped forward and wanted to serve their community in this capacity. Is there anybody that has anything to say, council, regarding these appointments? Seeing council member Maldonado?
I'd like to echo, thank you for all these folks that stepped up to the plate and my good friend Frida. So thank you Frida for stepping up.
Honestly, thanks, everybody that did step up, but I want to give a special thank to Ms. Merriman. I hold teachers right up there with police and fire. She's a teacher, she's an awesome teacher. I worked with her for years. She's a great teacher and she's gonna be great on any board she ever decides to get on. And I really want to give her a major thanks because there's something else to go deal with, somebody else bad, tell kids and have a different thing when you're coming off of work at the end of the day. So thank you, Ms. Merriman.
Excellent. So we need a motion.
I make a motion that we appoint the following applicants to the Community Service Advisory Board. Rebecca Smith, Frida Lapos Babson, and Julie Merriman.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Next up is our town manager report.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, just wanted to go ahead and say I had a meeting with the USDA director the same way that you all did. And boy, the energy and excitement she brought to that meeting. I had to stop myself from wanting to jump up out of my chair and start looking into those programs. I will go ahead and tell you that we're gonna utilize that resource for the benefit of the town. So you have my assurances that we as a team will go ahead and look at some of those programs that they offer. You all have my activities for the month and the monthly report. And I would just like to go ahead and say an opportunity to go ahead and read all the managers' departments reports and just would like to go ahead and thank them as a team. They did a wonderful job last month.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the town manager regarding his report? I loved the printout that you gave us as well, so thank you. Council member?
So I just had one question. It was in reference to the, to the speakers that are going in downtown. If there's a chance those could get put in before the car show, that'd be great because I know some of the feedback we got from last year and years past is that it was really loud last time. So if those could get put in, maybe that can alleviate that issue. But I don't want it to get rushed where it doesn't get done right, but if it can't be done before the car show, that'd be cool.
Yes, sir, we're working hard at that. Trent, Mr. Schaefer is working on trying to do an RFP for that. We're exploring cost. Once we go and get the cost, we'll present that back before council and you all will go and give us direction on that.
Thank you, Chief.
Moving on to our department reports, council members, are there any questions on any of the department reports received? All right, seeing none. We have our second call to the public this evening. Is there anybody in the public that has anything that they would like to say? Online, just raise your hand. All right, closing the second call to the public. I always love that we have these calls to the public because it gives us that opportunity to hear either comments or concerns or opportunities and activities that are going on in the community. So thank you. Next, we have our call to the council. Council member Adam?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to segue on what you just said. I just learned in my training that call to the public is optional at the mayor and council's discretion. And I think it would help the public to understand that. I was an angry mob person sitting out in those seats and I felt we were entitled to that. And I'm learning that some councils don't have any or just have one. And the fact that we have two, I think is exceptional. It's pretty awesome. I just came back from my very first League of Cities and Towns and I need to thank Lisa and Trish and Jeff and everybody who kept me straight because it's very confusing, but it was fabulous. It was a very, very good networking session. And you're starting to see some of the results of going to these conferences. The USDA was a result of the World Policy Forum and I am still piecing together some of the things I'm bringing back from the league, but they're very valuable. So thank you.
Council member Maldonado?
Thank you, ma'am. I'd just like to echo what Ms. Kathy said. This is my second year going to it. And I had a lot of stuff that I had learned, basically on, on the water issues going on right now in Arizona. One of the things I'd like to bring back to y'all is if you guys have family members in some of the five-membering states, tell them, you know, like, let's play nice when it comes to water issues. California and Nevada are on board with, with the water issues on the, that, that are coming up. So if you guys have folks that live in those areas or friends, let them know and let their, their constituents see know that there's issues that are coming up and water's a problem, gonna be a problem in the next couple of years if, if we don't try to take care of it and work together. The other thing was the, the broadband. I realized that broadband is a big thing and we found this out after COVID. So connectivity issues is gonna be a real thing. AI is, is here already. So these are issues that are, that are real. And I also learned about some of the other municipalities that are using drones to be, be the first on scene, so to speak, and, and going out there in a sudden situation. So it's, it's an issue and it's nice being ahead and, and learning from other municipalities. And yeah, also just the, the networking in itself was, was phenomenal. Learning on, on homelessness and learning about the, the silver wave that's coming. The amount of retirees that's coming in the next couple of years is gonna be astounding. So we really need to be ahead of the curve when it, when it comes to housing that's affordable. So not affordable housing, but housing that's affordable. That was something that was kind of ingrained to us. So thank you.
Council member Larson?
So I first want to give credit where credit is due. So we got this from the Viney Jones Library and one of the things that caught my eye right away was the youth programs. Now, if anyone remembers when I ran back in twenty sixteen, one of the reasons that I ran was because me and my children used to go visit the library back when it was over at the Florence High School. They, they had Storytime over there and it was a great program and we loved it. Met a lot of parents. It was fantastic. All of us used to hang out and have coffee afterwards or, or chit chat with the kiddos. So it was fantastic. But when they moved to the new site, we, they had it for a while and then it sort of fell off and then they, the programming was so all over the place. So I just wanted to say thank you so much because now we have an entire page dedicated to the youth programs that are out there and I want to make sure that all the parents stay engaged so that we can keep and continue to have these programs. I think that that's a big piece of the culture of Florence, to unify all of us. There is young families down here, young families up there. Something like the library is a great cultural point where that all these young families can come together. So I'm just so proud that we have these type of programs today and that they look fantastic. And although I don't have young kids and do not want more young kids, that they, I, I would encourage parents to please attend. So I just wanted to give that credit. And I also wanted to thank Kathy Adams for having USDA come down. Because in my past experience working with homes and escrow, a lot of the complaints that we hear from people on a daily basis was that they, especially my generation, we cannot afford a house. Rent is through the roof, we cannot afford it. One of the big attractors to this area is that we are USDA-covered area. A lot of people don't know that. They don't know what that means. So I think that having this education out there for the public, to the masses, is instrumental in making sure that we keep Florence a young, vibrant community and not just an aging population or where children leave and they never come back. I had a conversation the other day with a young family that was renting all through the valley and they just kept moving south and they were finally able to buy a home here in Florence. And to see things like that gives us longevity and it gives us a community that can thrive because we're no longer being pushed around by having these rent prices go up and down. They're able to establish a home. So it's instrumental in our community that we are able to have this foundation. So I am, I'm very glad that they were able to come share that information. On this flip side, you also hear about older generations who aren't able to afford those repairs. So having all of this knowledge out there for the public is instrumental. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. That was very long-winded and I apologize, but thank you. That's all I have.
Council member Neil?
Number one, that, the Senior Center, I think that's, that's sweet right there, that Senior Center. My aunt Val used to go there all the time and I remember she played dominoes. I remember I'd go check her out and everybody quit playing because nobody could beat her in dominoes. I never beat her either. She was bad. She was cold at it. Just real quick, the league was great. Just want to speak and I know some about, some, some, some pride, some town pride. I was walking around looking for our junior council and I walked by them about three times because I thought they was Coolidge. I'm a gopher, man. I'm born, bred gopher, man. We gotta start, I mean, some people might think it's petty, but, but you talk to some of these gophers out here. Man, don't, don't put our council in blue no more. Don't do that. Don't do that. It ain't gotta be red, but don't put them in blue no more. I love Coolidge. I got some brothers in Coolidge, some folks in Coolidge. That's Coolidge. We are gophers in the other school, you know, whatever it is. I'm, I'm just playing. But definitely not blue. I'm a gopher, man. That was, that was embarrassing. That was downright embarrassing. I, I ain't playing. I was downright hard mad about that. Don't put them in no more blue like that. Don't do it. Man, it's gonna be a misunderstanding the next time. I'm not playing. Speaking of our gophers, they are two and O and kicking some serious behind. They play Safford Friday. And they ballin'. My boy is number seventy-seven. Go check him out. He's smashing and pancaking everybody. Go red gophers.
Vice Mayor?
All right, we got marching orders. Go red. The League of Arizona Cities and Towns was very informative. I think each and every one of us brought back a little bit of something that we went to because we all went to different classes. We all went to different things. I think we are in the midst of putting things together and, and then trying to bombard the interim town manager with all the work that he and his crew is gonna need to do here in a, in a few, in a few days. But one of the things that I was really impressed about was our team council because they were out there and Ian was out there and he had one of the newer, well, actually, he had all the council doing it, but he had them out there. They had to go out, they had to meet three people, they had to talk to them, they had to find out what their interests were and they came back and reported. And I was just there, standing there talking to Ian. And next thing I know, he, you know, one of the team council members was, was reporting back and very impressed. You know, he, he seemed to be a little apprehensive about talking to people, but this was an exercise that helped. And I think that's gonna just build our team council to, to, to do bigger and better things. I also attended the East Valley Transportation Committee meeting. The only thing new that they had to report is that with the SR seventy, the five oh five, the north-south corridor, it has been named the SR five oh five. And segment one is already in, they're completing their studies and they just got to go ahead to start working on segment two, which will move it to the second part of, of, from Arizona Farms all the way down to the, the ELO area in, in I-ten. So that is moving forward. I was surprised to hear that the seg, segment second, excuse me, segment two was approved to go forward. So that's, that's a good thing for us. So that's good news. That's all for me.
Council member Buchalato?
I just wanted to say in going through the agenda this past weekend, how happy it made me to see all of the agenda items on there, from the Senior Center, from activities from the youth for the New Maker Station, the rodeo grounds. These were things that team council, these were things that were only being talked about two years ago when I started. And I just wanted to commend everybody from council to staff to community members for making these things happen. So I just wanted to say that, very proud of all that we are working on and accomplishing and thank you.
Thank you. So I wanted to first address council member Adam. So you are correct. So many, many years ago, when I first started on council, they only had one call to the public and it was at the beginning. And we only had one person that attended our meetings at that time. And one of the goals that our council has had throughout the years was to increase involvement, both in physical attendance as well as during, you know, COVID really helped us amp this part up, the online opportunity to engage and participate in our local government. In hearing from our community, they overwhelmingly wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to speak to their council, not just, you know, send an email or a phone call, but actually feel that they're being heard. And what better way to be heard than to speak at a council meeting? So that's why throughout the years, we've brought it together, God bless you, that there's an opportunity at the beginning of the council meeting, which really helps if there's an item on the agenda that you wanted to speak about beforehand. And then also at the end of the council meeting, because perhaps there's an item that occurred during the meeting and you wanted to comment on that as well. It provided that opportunity for closure. So transparency, being able to communicate, those have all been core values, I believe, of councils of the past and present. And the League of Cities and Towns was absolutely phenomenal. I want to congratulate council member Larson. She received an eight-year award. And I received a twelve-year award. So I served one term on council and two terms as mayor and. So I served one term on council and two terms as mayor, and you served two terms on council, so it's been absolutely amazing and a blessing to be able to contribute to the community. So I want to say thank you for this opportunity. We learned a lot, we gained a lot of valuable insight and information, because things are always changing and opportunities are always coming about at the council level that impacts the community. I am especially proud of our youth. They had an entire day where youth all across Arizona presented flags, they engaged in their own youth council meetings, and the Florence Teen Council gave a whole skit and presentation inviting youth across Arizona right here to Florence, Arizona on September 13th for their annual teen symposium. And that's going to be occurring, check in at nine o'clock, and it goes until three o'clock in the afternoon. They have planned such an exquisite opportunity to engage, to learn from keynote speakers, they're going to have photo booths set up. Our local photographer, Michael Baca, is going to be doing professional headshots for the youth, so quite the opportunity. And they will also be leaving the props up, so the day following, the community come, can come in and into the community center library and use those props to take photos as well. So we also have a planning meeting coming up on September 10th at 5:30 at night over at the community center, and this is for our annual Make a Difference Day, and that's going to be on October 19th. They're looking for ideas, so any ideas, suggestions that you have that you feel would be a good opportunity to positively impact Florence, I encourage you to show up and share out. And last but not least, go gophers. They are now ranked second in their region, and we are really looking forward to what they're going to be doing. This was probably the best game in about a decade. I mean, it was a cliffhanger. We do have an executive session this evening. You know, one of these meetings, I'm going to show up in jeans and a red shirt with white and black letters saying, "Go gophers." All right, take us to executive session, we need to have words. Can I have a motion to go to executive session, please?
Motion to adjourn the executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we are going to executive session. Nicole, we will call you in, or you call in.